I'd like to thank the City Council for asking me to come and pray, and I also would like to say, as I come every time, we could not have the shelter and the drug rehabilitation that we have without the folks in this room allowing it. We appreciate it, and we hope we're a shining example to our community for you to show others how to take care of the homeless and the drug addicted. Father in heaven, thank you for this time. Lord, I ask that you bless these proceedings. Father, that you'll give the members wisdom, and, Lord, you'll give people calm attitudes as they deal with the business at hand. Father, thank you for our fine city and our county. Lord, I ask that you bless these servants who give of their time to come and help run the affairs of our government. I ask these things in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Thank you. The Lord bless you.
Roll call, Mr. Kirby.
Councilman Brennan.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Councilwoman Abshire.
Here.
Councilwoman Matthews.
Here.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Proton McBay.
Here.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Here.
With six present.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest: any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
My name is David Johnson, and I'm with the Butler County Fair Board, and I come with this board every Fourth of July to ask for permission to fire fireworks in the city of Papa Bluff. Bridge and Stratus again granted us a grant to do fireworks. I've already talked with the chief and got that worked out, so all I need now is the council's permission to do it.
I move that we grant that for permission, Mr. Matt.
Second. Motion second to grant permission for the fireworks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Have a nice day.
Thank you.
I don't have anything near as exciting as that. My name is Bob Summers with Horner &amp; Schiffer in Engineering, and speaking to Doug last week, we thought it'd be a good time to come in and give the council a little update on the Oak Grove Road Phase III project that the city is part of. So I hope Pam has been able to get out some plans to everybody for you to take a look at. Those are preliminary plans at this point, but we have moved into the final design stages of the project. I'll give you just a short rundown of what we've done. Starting on Township Line Road, we've designed in a three-lane road up to, what is the name of the road? Up to Saddle Brook Trail. From there, it's a two-lane road all the way back to approximately where Dr. Gieselman's property is. Turns into a three-lane road again, all the way over to the construction that ends or ended with the 67 bypass improvements there. We're also redesigning the county road that runs north to Stone Oak Subdivision and building in some improvements there at the school, including a loop road around the school to control some of the traffic problems that have been there for many, many years. The road includes curb and gutter, 212-foot lanes, a total of 24-foot in width, except in the three-lane areas, which is 36, and then, obviously, storm gutters and drainage throughout the road. We have finished the environmental portion. They were actually out there drilling today for the geotechnical investigation. All the surveying work is done from top to bottom, and we have a pretty good feel of where the road's going to end up. One of the questions that I'm sure you'll have, so I'll just go ahead and answer it, is what is the preliminary cost estimate on this? At this point in time, we don't know that. We're still working on some details. The very first go-around on this project, it was reported, frankly, I don't know who came up with the estimate, but it was about $4.3 million for everything involved. I feel pretty confident that we are going to be below that, but I don't know at what point that is, and I'm not, I don't want to put my foot in my mouth at a later time. So we will get that information and get it back to the council, but I think our budget looks pretty good right now. We will be having some meetings upcoming over the next few weeks with the utility folks. We actually have a utility meeting scheduled for this Friday, and then there's some meetings with the county commission, the TDD Board, and the city also coming up. So it's starting, really, to come together and congeal. We've not started work on any of the right-of-way acquisition at this point. We wanted to really get the design down, per se, and make sure we get all of the details in place, and then start talking to some landowners. But I have been discussing some right-of-way with the school system and with K-2, who owns just the south, the old Huffman property there. So lots of good things going on, and I think we're actually ahead of schedule where we intended to be. What kind of questions you got?
Bob, will the two-lane be? You said it would be three-lane. How far west will the three-lane go? Will it go past Oak Grove School?
Yes, sir. We're going to completely end the large dip in the curve that's there by Oak Grove Road. We're going to take that curve completely out so it's straight. There's 25-foot of fill that's going to be put in that hole, if you will, and there'll be a new considerably larger intersection at that point with the county road. The three-lane will actually extend past it, I'm going to say, in the ballpark of about 200 feet. So there's a left turn lane in, and, of course, there's a right turn in also. And then, once you get down to about 450 feet east of Township Line, that's where the three-lane road will also start and go all the way into Township.
Okay.
That won't affect the apartments that are already there?
No.
I think Mr. Redmond's building some of them right.
We're planning on taking everything to the south. There's basically a lot less impact to the residents in that area by doing so, and Russ's apartments are one of the folks that we should have almost no impact on whatsoever.
The lane that you have for the extra cars, how many cars will that help with the relief here when they come by to pick up the children after school?
We actually did some car counting, and we came up with a maximum of about 85 cars to stack in there. So we designed for 100, and there are also currently six buses that are used with Oak Grove Road School, and so we've designed a bus loop, if you will, for eight buses, which allows for future growth on both of those items there on the school system and the school property itself.
That'll be great.
Yeah. As I've talked to Chris Hawn, it's going to take a week's worth of educating the parents on how the traffic flows are going to go, and probably will be a couple of days at the beginning of every school year from this point on, but things should be significantly better than they are right now. Because of the layout of the current Oak Grove Road School, there is no perfect solution. We have beat this idea to death, and there is no perfect solution, but this is a pretty good one that everybody's playing nice in the sandbox on, so.
Sounds like you're giving good traffic relief out of that, don't you?
Yep. It's going to be kind of a booger during construction, but once we get it all constructed, I think the residents in that whole area are going to benefit.
You do. Thank you.
It's good that you planned for the increase, because once that happens, that's going to increase that traffic.
Absolutely.
On all that road. So it's good that we're getting that curve out of there, because that's always been a danger, and I always had a fear that you could have a bad accident there and hurt a lot of children or kill one, whatever. So that's a major improvement, as far as I'm concerned, in that area.
So far, I've just had one complaint. It's that now all the sledding hills are gone on Oak Grove Road.
We still have Davis Street.
Yeah. Any other questions? I'll leave you guys alone.
I mean, I guess where we go down to two-lane is also the most critical part of our right-of-way issues, too, where you pull most of the road over to the south, which is where there is a little more right-of-way that we can acquire there. But it's going to be a really nice project. It ties into the existing project really well, and Bob's work with Jeremy and myself both keep us informed, but I thought it'd be a good time for him to come and just let the council know kind of where we're at on it right now.
Okay. Guys, thank you very much for your time. I'm going to sneak out and let you have at it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. If you approach the podium, need your name and address, please.
Jim Schultz, 911 Baron Road. I'm from the senior citizens group. We're very concerned about the electrical rate, possibility of an increase. We're trying to understand this contract deal. We don't understand it, and who do I talk to, or who do we talk to, to find out, you know, where we are on it, you know, on the catalytic converters going on to the diesel engines? There's a contract out or not, and I don't know what the information is, and nobody seems to know. Will that be brought up at a later date? I thought it might be brought up tonight.
The rate increases will come up tonight under action-required items.
Okay.
Will probably allow, so there's still some questions. We'll probably have some citizens input on that portion.
Okay. Does this have anything to do with the diesel engines?
No.
Okay. Is that already settled, or is that?
No, sir.
Okay. That's what I need to know. That information will be available in the future, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ruby Goodrum. I live at 2622 North 14th Street. I have a few questions. The first one is, do you have any new news about how to solve the problems on our ditch problem there on 14th Street? Have you got any new news or developments that can help us on this ditch problem?
We're still talking with Sears Youth Center to get some volunteers out there to put the rocks that's down there up, and Mr. Bagby said we could have some additional riprap when they got out there that the city possibly had available.
They've been out there. I talked to Robbie Stewart myself. He knocked on my door, and we looked the situation over, and he said, "I am not about to subject my man, my boys, down there. It's going to take a machine to lift those items. I'm not going to do it." So there's your answer there.
Okay.
Is there some code enforcement? You and I might have had a conversation. Code enforcement might have went on the other end and started something.
Yeah, code enforcement, there was some back on the properties over budding Linda Lane. There were some issues that I think were addressed.
That's where all of our rock went.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. It's dammed up back there, and...
Well, that winds up being, really, if they've got trash and stuff in the ditch, which is, I understand, there was some back there, and they did get it cleaned out, but if there's some trash and stuff in the ditch, code enforcement can do that. The rock and other stuff remaining in the ditch winds up, if somebody damages your property as a result of it, then that winds up being a civil action, that they can't do that, but...
The rainwater is a civil action.
If somebody dams up a ditch, we don't have any...
Well, sir, listen to me. The rainwater comes through there fast enough to drown you if you was to jump in.
It does in several places in town when we have the heavy rains. What we can do is at the intersection of the ditch and 14th, we can control and help you some with that. The other portion, we can provide material because we have riprap available, but we can't, it winds up being private property on that, and we can't go in and work on every drainage problem in private property. Just don't have the manpower and wherewithal to do it. But we can provide riprap, and we can do things, as I've told you before, I lived on Linda Lane, so I know what kind of water comes down through there. But that's kind of, we also know that the property is now in a flood plain, which would allow your property to be purchased in a flood buyout program if we could wind up getting it approved. I think that's correct, isn't it? So that might be another option, because that water is, I mean, the water was going there before the house was built, and it's going there now, and it's not going to quit going there.
It has whitened a lot.
There is no question about it.
No question about it.
It does.
Ma'am, could I ask a question? Several years ago, were trees lined both sides of that ditch, and they were cut down? Is that correct? I've been told that.
Yes. I wanted a pretty place like everybody else had, and I made the mistake of cutting those down. It cost me $600. It was like a jungle in there. Yes, sir.
But they were cut on both sides of the ditch, and that really opened it up, didn't it?
No, just my side.
Yeah. I know we have some other folks that talked to me about the same kind of drainage problem. Goes down the street over on Sunset. There's a place the lady had to build a retaining wall, because when he built the house, built it right up next to the ditch, and as the water went through, you know, and she built a retaining wall on her property there to protect her house.
Now, this is...
And those trees were, the way I understood it, was at least helping on your property, and they were cut down.
It probably was.
And it created another problem.
I've been out there 10 years.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've been 10 years.
Yeah. I know I looked at that several years ago when I was mayor, came out and looked at it with you, and I was told at that time that the trees had been cut down on both sides.
No, no. You're right. The retaining wall on the other side, is it the other side of North 14th? That lady had built?
No, no. It's on Sunset Street.
It's on Northwood. Isn't it on Northwood? Yeah, on Northwood, the retaining wall.
No, it's on Sunset Street.
There's one on Northwood, too.
It's a problem similar to yours.
Yes, but I was told that that had to be built there in order for the city to put lines in there. That's why they built the retaining wall.
No, the city didn't build a retaining wall.
That's what I was told.
She built the retaining wall.
There's no retaining wall on our end, nowhere.
Well, again, we can riprap out next to the road and control that back a portion of the way, but to go all the way through there with concrete or riprap or retaining wall, like I say, we just don't have the wherewithal. I lived behind you on Linda Lane, had a huge ditch running through that property, and I know how the water flows out there. So it is a problem.
When that rushes through 4th and 14th Street, it's almost like a Niagara Falls. And a person as big as you are, if you jumped in, you'd drown. No doubt about it. But anyway, so be it. Who is responsible for getting this rock back from Linda Street, to where it belongs, that the rainwater, the storm water washed down there?
Who's responsible for getting it back?
Yeah.
Well, generally, there's more...
It used to be ours.
If it's on somebody else's property now as a result of rainwater, I'm not sure you can go reclaim it, but hopefully, there's no problem with your rock being in somebody else's yard.
If we got a vehicle in there that would pick up those things and pile it up at the end of our property, what do you think the people over there would do to us?
I don't know. The issue is, we can provide riprap if you can provide labor to get that ditch lined on each side, or you can do a retaining wall. We can do that as far as providing riprap for you. We can't go in on private property and fix a problem. We would never stop working on private property, and it's just not the way it works, not the way the tax bases are set up or anything else. So we can't go on private property and fix individual property owners' problems.
That water is eroding. It's all on my side. It's not so much on Carol and Tim's property, but it's undermining my property. You understand what I mean?
I do.
There's nothing that roots there.
And like I said, I think the cheapest route for you to go would be allow us to provide riprap and build a nice-looking concrete...
You haven't offered that before, sir.
Do what?
You haven't offered that before.
Yes, I have.
They brought one dump truck out there for...
Well, there needs to be somebody there to lay it and stack the riprap. The street superintendent would be glad to show them how it needs to be put in.
Am I able to do that? I'm 83 years old.
I wasn't referring to you.
I have vertigo, and I've been down that ditch twice and injured both of my knees trying to stack that rock up where it was. At one place that I've been working on is within 43 to 44 inches of my foundation of my home. Eventually, it's going to crack my foundation.
It needs to be fixed. You're absolutely right.
And I can't afford to fix it. I can't afford no rain hanging on it.
We also have the option of putting your house in the flood buyout program. Now, that may not be an attractive option to you, but it's something that will allow you to get away from that problem and also possibly allow us to remove the house and put some kind of detention basin in there of some form, which would help everybody in the area. So, I mean, that's a distinct possibility.
Another option, as me and Carol's discussed, is putting in a large galvanized cupboard in there to cover our properties only, not the whole ditch.
Mm-hmm.
You can't ask us to do that.
No, no, no. We wouldn't. We'd want to help size the pipe.
Okay. Have you looked into the cost of one of those?
Do what?
You promised us that you'd look into the cost of one of those for us to buy to put in there. We'd go halves on it.
Halves with you and Carol?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we can get you a cost. I don't think Jeremy's got one off the top of his head right now, but we can get you a cost on that.
After you place it, you know, you'd have to fill it with riprap around it. You understand that? Because you can get one wide enough to really fit in there permanent, like...
Well, we'd have to size it with an engineer to make sure that we wasn't sopping water up. I mean, we'd have to have somebody stamp it to make sure that we weren't going to get sued on the other side of the street because we put a 12-inch tile where we needed a 48.
Well, I understand that. It'll be big enough that we want, that it won't do that.
Well, it will probably very nearly be the size of the bottom of the ditch and probably an oblong pipe that would carry as much water as the ditch does.
Okay. You brought up the Corps of Engineers.
No, I didn't.
You didn't?
No. I just said an engineering firm would have to stand before us. Okay, you're more than welcome to.
I got in touch with them, and they didn't much want to touch it either. I got in touch with the fellow. I went through several channels, but this fellow by the name of Lewis Clark out of St. Louis, he said if I was to get two to three estimates on what it would cost to fix that there, they probably could help us so much. But people won't come out and look at it. Carol's had two that promised to come out and look at it, and I've had at least one. They won't come out and look at it and give us an estimate. So therefore, I've got to have these before he can issue permits to get this work done. He's out of St. Louis. I've got his phone number. Pinkston was one of them, and I don't know what the two she had. But one of them I called said they didn't do that business no more, that kind of business anymore. But I have tried.
We have a list of construction contractors, Dennis.
Yes, sir.
We'll make sure and get you forward a list of contractors. We don't recommend any. We can just get you a list of contractors that do that kind of work, and also, Jeremy, if you could get a sizing on that pipe and some kind of idea as to a cost for Mrs. Goodrum.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven a foot.
Okay.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven a foot. How large and how big? Well...
That's probably about a 48.
Forty-eight.
I don't know about a 60.
A 48 to 60-inch pipe's probably what it would need, but we would want somebody that has a stamp beside their name to tell us that.
Say that again, please.
We would want somebody, we would want an engineering firm to look at it and size that pipe for us.
Yeah.
To make sure that we didn't damage somebody else.
Yeah, of course. You couldn't damage anybody else's because it's just me and her involved. We want...
There can be some upstream issues if the pipe's sized too small.
Oh. Well, I hadn't thought about that. That's like a dam up there, isn't it?
Yeah. That winds up being a civil issue again.
Okay, that's what I have to report, that we have gotten nowhere on as far as the involvement in estimates of what it's going to take to fix it or anything, because we can't get nobody out there to look at it. And Sears Youth Camp, Sears Youth guys aren't going to fix it. Nope. It would not endanger his boys. Take the machine and fix those.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
She didn't want to talk about cutting down any damn trees, did she? And that's what started the whole thing.
Nothing else for the citizens input? If I could have the Shriners meet me down at the podium?
Yeah. My mother?
Well, I'm sorry, but she has made progress. I tell you, Sears Youth Corps of Engineers said that they're going to come on private property and fix it.
Before I read the proclamation, I tried to think of something to say about Shriners. What I could think of was probably the most giving, caring group that involves children that I've ever heard of, and everyone that I've talked about agrees with that, is truly proud of what you all have done for all the kids around our area, but nationwide. But whereas the City Council of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri is always pleased to recognize those events which bring credit upon the community, and Shriners Hospitals have rendered professional care to millions of children at their 19 orthopedic hospitals treating sclerosis, osteoporosis, brittle bone disease, hand and back problems, and deficiencies and growth problems, and Three Shriners Burn Institutes, the first burn hospitals in America dedicated solely to treatment of children, are internationally recognized as pioneers in burn treatment. And the Three Rivers Shrine Club is celebrating 50 years of service to the community and provided medical care to over 1,000 local children, making it possible for them to live happier and more productive lives, and such treatments are always rendered free of charge to patients and the family of the patient. And Shriners Hospitals render childcare services voluntarily, placing no burden whatsoever upon federal, state, or local funding accounts, with the entirety of such services being paid by Shriners and support from the general public. Now, therefore, I, Ed DeGerris, Mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, recognize and salute the Three Rivers Shrine Club members who have demonstrated themselves in a righteous and honorable manner. The witness where I lie appears to accept my hand and call for the official seal of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be affixed on the 17th day of June 2013.
No other citizens input? Ask for the consent agenda? Motion second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda is put forth. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Next item will be a workshop item. City Council will review a request for a letter of endorsement for an ambulance service of notice incorporated relative to the John J. Pershing Veterans Administration Hospital.
I have a copy of the letter in your packets. This is, the VA has put out bids for the transfer of patients to and from outlying VA and other hospitals. This is not another ambulance service that is going to do 911 calls or anything else in town. It is just to bid on the VA transfer of patients, both to and from. It is, notice is the company. Your letter is from Pam Halverson. It is simply something that is required, an endorsement from both, I believe, the county and the city on these projects in order to be licensed in Missouri. Their bid, I'm assuming, is contingent on being licensed in Missouri. And Pam, if you want to say something, you're welcome to. Okay. But this is simply, we have checked with the Secretary of State's office in Wisconsin. They're a member in good standing. See no reason. They actually have the contract in Marion right now, I think, doing the same thing in the second year of that contract. Marion right now, I think, doing the same thing in the second year of that contract. So, this is just simply a way for them to be able to be licensed in Missouri and bid on this project.
You know, to me, this would be a good thing because as a veteran, I've talked to other veterans, and some of them get concerned about the wait time for them occasionally to be transported. So hopefully, this will address a problem for veterans who need care in St. Louis or Columbia or wherever you would take them to. And again, we're not approving anything. We're just saying it's okay for them to bid on it, and the VA will make the final decision whether they hire your company or not, correct? Okay.
And also, we have two ambulance services in town now, and they do an excellent job. And again, this is not for 911 calls, but it does give us a relationship with another service that if we had some kind of disaster or something down here, I'm sure they would be more than available, more than happy to be available for us, so.
Well, I know in recent, some of the information I've received, some veterans, some of the transportation they received to go to St. Louis, and I know the VA wasn't happy with it. They weren't satisfied with riding the bus being pretty sick, and I can understand that. So, if it, hopefully, it'll happen to where we can have good transportation for these guys that need to be moved and they can do it expeditiously and take care of their needs.
Mr. Mayor, no further comments. I make a motion to move item A to the meeting two weeks from today.
B, we just need a motion and a second for a letter of endorsement to be executed.
On second motion?
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, City Council will review a proposed Delta Regional Authority Grant application to provide fiber optic broadband internet to the industrial park.
Good evening. Steve Halter with the Poplar Bluff Chamber of Commerce and Poplar Bluff Industries. Thanks for allowing us to take a little bit of time to talk about the DRA grant that we're asking for you guys to participate in. As you know, throughout the years, our city, our communities, really worked on highway infrastructure with the Highway 67, the industrial park bypass, and now with the regional TDD and all the wonderful things that Bob Summers talked about. I feel like it's equally important to work on our technological infrastructure in our area. We see a need in the industrial park, both for retention and recruitment, to increase the broadband capacity down in the industrial park. Felicity and Crystal from Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission have been working with the DRA on a grant for our area, which would essentially bring fiber to all of the plants in the industrial park and also the vacant lots, obviously, that we're trying to market right now. The current capacity out there, and I'm not a tech guy, but I brought the tech guys with me tonight, just in case you have any of those kind of questions. But right now, the capacity is 10 meg up and 2 and 1/2 meg down, and we've already got one factory that's added to max by doing this through this grant. And I think the grant's for $224,000, $224,276.67 to be exact. Right, Felicity?
All right, good.
So, this would allow it to be 10 meg up, 10 meg down, with the option of going 20 meg up, 20 meg down. So, with someone already being at full capacity now, and I know they'd like to go to have greater capacity, at least their corporate office would, we think it's an important thing, like I said, both for retention and recruitment. This obviously requires, first of all, the city to participate, enter into a participation agreement, really essentially no match money involved in it at all through the city. And it also requires one of our manufacturing plants to step up and say, we'll sign an agreement as well to retain a certain amount of jobs. Felicity and I feel confident that we have someone that's willing to do that. They haven't signed, so we're not really willing to disclose that, but we feel confident that we have somebody that will sign that agreement. And what we're asking is for the city to sign a participation agreement. You guys have done these before through the DRA, very familiar with them. Most of you are, and I'd be glad to answer any questions on it.
Provides a tool, obviously, to market the industrial park a little, even a little better than we're able to now. So, it's not only a good marketing tool, not only a good technical tool, and will bring additional speeds to the industrial park, but also a very good marketing tool.
I think we need to do everything we can to help the Chamber of Folks upgrade our areas to where we can attract more industry. I certainly think this is a good plan, especially the cost is reasonable for us.
Right.
Infrastructure is what it's going to take to, what we've been preaching for, everything all over town, infrastructure. So this is just an added bonus, too.
With a grant?
No other questions? I entertain a motion and a second to move this to the voting session. It'll be held July 1st.
Second.
I would move, so move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Halter.
Thank you.
Do you want to say something about a groundbreaking coming up?
Oh, yeah. That is next, if I have my dates right, next Tuesday at 10:00 a.m., we'll have a groundbreaking for Menards, and we invite all of you all out there. But if you come out, you may have to get a shovel in your hands, so be careful there. You may have to get it dirty. But Larry Menard himself will be here, so that's always nice to have some of that caliber in our community. And obviously, we've got some other ones in the works, so. And also, I'd like to say this is National Small Business Week, so support your local small businesses. Thank you.
I'm going to action required items. Item AA, bill number 7602, the City Council will take action on ordinance creating the Kellytown Plaza Community Improvement District within a certain area of Poplar Bluff, Missouri in accordance with petition of the property owners within the proposed district.
Move for first reading of bill 7602.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7602, in ordinance of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, creating the Kellytown Plaza Community Improvement District within a certain area of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, in accordance with the petition of the property owners within the proposed district.
Move for second reading, bill number 7602.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7602, in ordinance of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, creating the Kellytown Plaza Community Improvement District within a certain area of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, in accordance with the petition of the property owners within the proposed district.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any comments? Roll call, Ms. Kirby?
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McBay?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill 7602 is adopted. Bill number 7603, the City Council will take action on ordinance accepting the rate study by Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus LLC regarding electric power rates and approving a rate increase.
Move for first reading, bill number 7603.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7603, in ordinance accepting a rate study by Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus LLP regarding electric power rates for the Municipal Utilities Department of Poplar Bluff and approving an electric rate increase for residential and commercial customers of Poplar Bluff Municipal Utilities.
Move for second reading, bill number 7603.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7603, in ordinance accepting a rate study by Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus LLP regarding electric power rates for the Municipal Utilities Department of Poplar Bluff and approving an electric rate increase for residential and commercial customers of Poplar Bluff Municipal Utilities.
Move for adoption, bill number 7603.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Have any questions or comments? We have a representative.
I have, I'm sorry, I missed out. Last meeting, just, and I did watch a little bit on TV. Do we, I know we're doing away with the PPA. It'll still be a line item, but do we have just a kilowatt price? I'm sure I overlooked it for residential.
The question was, just a kilowatt price for residential with this rate increase?
The proposed rates have zero for a purchase power adjustment, and then a uniform rate per kilowatt hour for the residential plant, still retaining the winter high use lower rate to incent consumption in the winter, which is traditionally Poplar Bluff Utilities' low demand period. The City Council and the utilities, I think, have a decision about what to do with the purchase power adjustment going forward. I think it's a good tool since Poplar Bluff Utility is subject to the ebbs and flows of the wholesale power market to retain that, but the rates as proposed just reset it to zero. And then there are options going forward about what to do with it.
And just to kind of, to put it in perspective for me, we'll say 100 kilowatts. I'm kind of just trying to get what the first kilowatt of power costs each.
So, the, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but an average residential customer uses about 1,500 kilowatt hours per month. Each kilowatt hour costs eight and a half cents about.
Okay. Thanks.
I just want to confirm, there was no study to make sure that, there was no study to look at how we could save money, right? It was just at what we have going forward?
That's correct. The study was taking the capital budget of the utilities, taking the operating budget of the utilities, and comparing those to the customer loads and the revenue at the present rates. It wasn't any kind of a study of the efficiency of the utility or how its costs relate to its peers or anything like that. It was taking the projections of the utility and comparing them to the existing rates.
Tom, I was hoping to point two weeks ago, though, that we have control of about $6 million of that $33 billion.
That's true.
So, this is not a paperclip and pen situation. $28 million is power supply costs, and we could do away with the distribution department and still require a rate increase.
I'm not sure off the top of my head, but as I said, and it bears repeating, Poplar Bluff is subject to the wholesale power market for a majority of its costs.
Yes, ma'am, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. Does this mean that the rates are going to increase more?
Yes.
Yes. My jet.
We all do. We all get to pay the rates.
My electric bill-
I won't pick her up. Okay.
Miss?
Good room.
Miss Goodroom?
There's tacked on there, tacked on the, your adjusted, they're buying electric to service my home. That's tacked on every bill.
Are you asking about the purchase power adjustment?
Yeah.
What we're trying to do, or what the utilities is trying to do there, is so when I come in and do a study, I can make an estimate, maybe 12 months of what wholesale power costs will be. But even during that 12 months, wholesale power costs will go up or down unpredictably. So what the adjustment tries to do is, without needing to have somebody like me come and do a whole new study, there's just a formula that you can calculate. Here's the sales, here's our purchase power cost, here's how much we need to change the rates, so that the utilities can make sure that the rates is trying to reflect the cost that is paying to the wholesale power market. So I know that that's bad from your point of view because then you're being subject to the winds of the wholesale power market, but it does reduce the need for the utilities to have frequent rate studies because there's some method to automatically adjust.
Is there any way we can-
Sir?
Other cities in the areas like Sykesville?
If you've got a question, would you please come up to the microphone so we can hear everything? Sorry.
I'm Jim Schultz again, and how do we rate with Dexter and Sykesville and, you know, the other towns around it on our electric rates? Mine seems awful high, too, but I've got an older house, and I can understand it. I'm not saying, are we in line with everybody else or not, you know?
Cheaper than Dexter. Sykesville is, I think, the lowest cost provider in the state, right?
Yeah.
We are in the top 10 even after this rate study.
Yeah, I don't know. There's been a study, it's been a long time ago. I can remember it looked fairly good.
We get documentation from American Public Power Association, one year behind every year.
It's so confusing on your bill. You got your bill, and you got this addition on, and you know, it's very confusing for us.
Purchase power adjustment is now going to zero. What Andrew and Baker Tilly is actually suggesting is that we, because of the fluctuations in the market, that we don't do away with that. It could be that we would need an adjustment up in six months or a year, and then possibly an adjustment back down to zero at some point in time. When we see that adjustment isn't going to go back down, we will be back here looking at a rate increase at that point.
Yeah. I'm just concerned, senior citizen, I know a lot of them are eating cat food and everything right now, and it's pretty tough, you know? And it breaks my heart to see all this happening. And I know you guys are doing your best you can to keep the rates low, but just on this catalytic converter thing, you know, why? Quarter million dollars? You know, I don't know. I don't understand, you know? You're wanting a rate increase, and we're, there's quarter million dollars sitting there. You know, I don't understand, you know? That could be used for electric, I think. I don't know. You guys got to tell me, okay?
And I had talked somewhat, Bill, about the comparison with the other communities, and that's not included in the report, but what we had generally found was that you were probably on the low side of the grouping, some lower, some higher. And I looked at the same information that I think you're referring to from the APPA and based on the information from the Department of Energy.
Tom, actually, your counterpart last week was thinking about moving.
Oh, yeah.
He said our rates were much less.
I don't know how much electricity, so maybe it'd be a good choice.
I have a question. Did you look at Ozark border rates compared to this new increase? Because I was looking it up. I was kind of surprised because I think we're about to, if we approve this, we'll either be at the same price as them or maybe higher. And am I wrong?
When Ozark-
Ozark border.
It's the electric cooperative we have here, and I don't want to say because I don't know exactly. I think they're at 9.2.
I don't know. I don't think, well, according to their website, I think it's a little different, but.
I know that I looked at the investor-owned utilities, the co-ops, and the municipal utilities. I think the co-ops were highest, but that's only my recollection. And I think that Poplar Bluff was below the average for the co-ops. I don't know about any one in particular.
This all boils down to two things. It's like the price of gasoline. We have no control over the price of gasoline. We all go with a pump, and if we want, we have to pay what they charge. With electricity, it's the same thing for the city. It says, this is what it's going to cost you to buy this much electricity. So we either pay it or we don't have it, so we pay it. Now, the only other cost is the distribution of it. And I know when we lose power in part of the city, everyone wants their power back on immediately, as quick as they can. They want efficient staff that'll get out and do the job and get it put back together. We do a lot of tree trimming, which helps us a lot. And so the only place you could do any cutting would be in your budget and if we, for running the utilities. The way I understand it, what you all presented was, we did away with all of it. We would still need a rate increase to pay for the power that we have to purchase, and we have absolutely no control over that.
And I guess just to emphasize, Ozark Boarder does an excellent job. They're our local co-op here, and they do an excellent job. We have SWPA power, which you're aware of, and we've got 39 and 1/2 megawatts of our, a little less than 90-megawatt load that winds up being at a very attractive rate. And when we get supplemental, that's one of the reasons of the difference in our rate, and that was done back in the '50s, a long time ago, when we were designated at 39 and 1/2 meg. That 39 and 1/2 megs becomes less of our total peak every year. I can remember when I first went to the utilities, that was our summer load, I mean, our winter load. We would run along at 29 to 30. Well, when your load winds up, when half of it's supplemental and hydro, you're- Well, when your load winds up, when half of it's supplemental and hydro, your power supply cost is really, we're up to almost 90 meg right now. And so it becomes less of a part of our load, which obviously increases our costs when we look at more traditional coal-fired plants.
Well, there's definitely, if I can comment, there's definitely a need for an increase overall. There are a few important pieces in the proposed rates, dealing not with the need for overall increase, but how the increase is distributed between different customers. For example, we proposed a fixed customer charge. The utility has a lot of fixed costs to connect to customer transformers or wires that aren't specifically related to the amount of electricity that customer is using. Another piece of the proposed rates is a demand charge. There are some of the costs, for example, the size of a transformer to serve a customer depends on that customer's peak use, not on the total energy use. So it's more appropriate to put a cost like that on a demand charge rather than an energy charge. And we also propose changes to the tier structure of the rates. And so I just want to, just want to make sure that you're aware of those. Aside from the need to increase the revenues overall to cover the costs that you mentioned, there is a need to adjust how the costs are charged and allocated to the different customers. And this study does all of those things.
No further questions? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Abshire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham?
No.
Councilwoman Matthews?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson?
No.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have four yes votes and two no votes.
Thank you. Bill Number 7603 is adopted at a 4 to 2 vote. Item CC, the City Council of the City of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the open meeting law, Section 16.021.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.9, 1.11, 1.12, 1.13, and 1.14, revised statutes of Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move to closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Baker?
I was going to mention the Menards groundbreaking on the 25th. That's already been done. I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
I want to thank the city for allowing us to attend the elected officials' seminar. It allows us to each one become certified as an elected official. I presided over about 200 participants across the state, and they focused it on procedures of open, of city council meetings, sunshine law, and I have packets for everyone that I brought back for those that didn't attend.
I'd like to concur, Ms. Williams. I've been to several MML meetings. They had the best group of speakers this year that I've ever heard. They were well-versed, they were good speakers, and they stayed on task, and it was very meaningful. I think for everyone there, I didn't hear any comments, except good comments about the conference. And our mayor, Proton, did a good job of running it because you have some hawks all over the state, and that's quite a task. So you did a good job, Ms. Williams. Thank you for that.
Thank you. It was attended by Mayor DeGerris, Councilman Robert Smith, and Councilman Matthews and myself, in Jeff City.
Nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It will be adjourned. Take about a five-minute recess.